Okay, I've got six o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners to order. I'm gonna ask everyone to please stand while we have the pledge and remain standing. Commissioner McKinney is gonna lead us with the word of prayer after the pledge.
And I pray, Father God, we thank for the minute blessing you bestowed upon us. Father, as we go in this meeting, as you guide our thought and our thought process to help us to do the best we can for citizens of Jackson County. Father God, we thank for the rain, for those pollen, and having the pollen that you, knowing a lot of people suffering with allergies and things. So we thank you for the rain, in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I congratulate the people who are the United States of America and who live in the Father, for which he stands, one day, at God, in his presence, we may be able to be in his court on.
Very good. I'd like to welcome everyone to the, to tonight's meeting. With that being said, we've got, we have any, we've got several changes to the agenda, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, we have four additions under section four, number fifteen, request board approval to enter into a participating party agreement. Number sixteen, request board appointment of commissioner to regional rule transportation plan technical advisory committee. Number seventeen, request board approval of Baptist college sidewalk closeout documents. And number eighteen, request board approval of a proposal for services for task five, extension with Finley Engineering.
Thank you. You've heard the request for the additions to the agenda. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to approve the agenda. Second from Commissioner Brans, any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, it stated, please signify by raising their right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Under section one, which is recognitions, resolutions, and presentations, we've got board adoption of Red Cross Month proclamation. I think we've got people here from Red Cross. If you don't mind, come, come forward and introduce yourself. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Very well.
My name is Andy Cornet. I'm the disaster program manager in Panama City.
Okay.
And this here is, thank you, sir.
Ricky McAlpin, y'all know me.
We know Ricky.
He's a volunteer with us.
Yep.
Denise Spears, volunteer.
What was your name, ma'am?
Denise Spears.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
We, we never read it. This is a first for me. This is awesome. This is great. So, but at first I'd like to say, sir, is that, um, I'm the, I'm the only employee within the six county of Holmes, Jackson, Calhoun, Gulf, and Bay.
Okay.
Washington. If you don't see me, everybody else is a volunteer. So I, I thank, and I'd like you to know that if you see a Red Cross person out there and it's not me, it's a volunteer giving up their time and they're passionate to help others. And that's why I want to make sure I acknowledge them. And I'll, I'll read this. During Ameri- during the American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Jackson County and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. The generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Claire Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who notably dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. Today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step up through the American Red Cross Northwest Florida chapter to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. Their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize this month as March in honor of those who have fulfilled Claire Barton's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it, and ask everyone to join in this commitment. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of, of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need. And we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. Now therefore, we, Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in, thank you, yeah, thank you, sir, by the laws of Florida, do hereby proclaim March as Red Cross Month. We encourage all citizens of Jackson County to reach out to support its humanitarian mission. And witness, and witness whereof, I have her on to set my hand, March twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth day of March, in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-four, in Marianna, Jackson County, Florida.
Very good. Thank you for reading that. And I think I speak for all of the board members that we're certainly very appreciative of the work that the Red Cross does, not only in this community, but in communities across Northwest Florida and across the state, across the country, and actually throughout the world. It's certainly a noble, a mission that the Red Cross has in serving all of these communities. And we're certainly appreciative of the work that you do. And Ricky and, and the work that you guys do on a voluntary basis, it's very important and we certainly appreciate it. With that being said, we'll certainly entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we adopt the proclamation authorized chairman's side.
Okay. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock and a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions, comments, concerns, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Again, on behalf of our board, we certainly appreciate all three of you coming to the meeting tonight, presenting that proclamation. And again, for the work that you and Red Cross does in our community.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And we were very honored to come out during the tornadoes to assist in Jackson County. It's, it's like our second home. The McAlpins are awesome. They are great volunteers. And anything we can do for Jackson County, or Marianna, or any Greenwood, you name it, any of the other cities that are out here, you, you let us know. We're here to help.
Ricky, you want, anything you want to add to that?
Well, man, my wife and volunteers for eight years. We covered Jackson, Holmes, Washington, and Calhoun Counties. And now it's, it's, it's fulfilling and heaven people.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that.
Can we, can we get a picture if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
Thank you guys. That'd be awesome. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, moving down the agenda. Two. Item number two, we got board adoption of National County Government Month proclamation, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, I'll read it. Whereas the nation's three thousand sixty-nine counties serving more than three hundred and thirty million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas Jackson County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas, under the leadership of the National Association of Counties President Mary Jo McGuire, NACO is highlighting county leadership through the Lens Board together, celebrating the role of county government in connecting, inspiring, and leading as intergovernmental partners. And whereas that role includes a responsibility to inspire county residents to engage with their communities and to lead by highlighting our strength as intergovernmental partners. And whereas each year since nineteen ninety-one, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And whereas Jackson County employees work tirelessly to provide services that fuel economic growth and ensure public safety, prioritizing wise stewardship of material, fiscal, and natural resources, and enhance our cultural heritage through collaborative governance and community participation. And in so doing, exemplify the county's values of for Jackson, for future, for you. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April two thousand twenty-four as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Daniels, for reading that proclamation. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the proclamation. Got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield, a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, it stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion also carries unanimously. Moving down to item number two, which is our public hearing. We've got a request for board review and approval of a general development order for Project Bobo. Ms. Barnes, you want to address that or Ms. Daniels?
Oh, go ahead. Uh, this is to construct a one thousand three hundred and thirteen square foot building for an oil change facility and thirty-two thousand eighty-nine square feet of impervious surface to include sidewalks and vehicular use area. The project will be located at twenty-one ninety-three Highway seventy-one South in unincorporated Jackson County. And on March fourth, two thousand twenty-four, the planning commission recommended approval.
Okay. With that being said, we'll close out our regular scheduled meeting, go into a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the issuance of this development order for Project Bobo? Seeing no hands in the audience wishing to speak either for or against. Fred, is there anyone online indicating a desire to speak for this issue or against this issue?
Anyone wishing to speak online may use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine via telephone. I have two hands up.
Okay. Uh, can, can we take the first caller, which I don't know which one would be defined as the first caller, but go ahead, state your name and, uh, go ahead and state your case. Are you with us?
Can you all hear me?
We can barely. If you don't mind, speak up.
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Pyburn, and I am a representative of the oil change facility.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you all know I am present, and if there are any questions, I would be happy to take them. But our company is super excited to hopefully develop in Marianna.
Say your name again, please.
Deborah, Deborah Pyburn, P as in Peter, Y B U R N, Deborah Pyburn.
Did you get that? Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Deborah while we've got her on the line? I will say that this is a new development. I understand this is where the old Shoney's used to be. And that building will be demolished and a new facility constructed.
Was Shoney's or Prophets?
Both. Thank you. Any, any questions? Deborah, I don't think there's any questions from the boards concerning this, so we appreciate you being online.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Fred indicated that we had two persons online indicating a desire to speak either for or against. Fred, is there still someone online?
Hello, good afternoon. Uh, this is Tamie Bet with Thomas Engineering. I am with the same development with Deborah. I'm the civil, I'm from the civil engineering team. Just want to let you guys know that I'm also here to answer any questions, but I think Deborah, Deborah covered the introduction and all of that.
If you don't mind, for the record, please state your name one more time slowly, so that we can catch it.
My name is Tamie Bet, T H A M E E, last name Bet, T H E T.
Okay. Do we get that? Thank, all right. Very good. Any questions? Okay, we appreciate you coming online and, uh, anyone else, Fred, that's indicating a desire to speak either for or against?
I see no other hands.
Thank you. With that being said, no one in the audience indicating a desire to speak either for or against, we'll close out this public hearing. Go into, go back into our regular hearing. We got a motion to approve the development from Commissioner McKinney.
Approve this.
Got a, a motion from Commissioner McKinney and a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, it stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, moving down to section three, uh, community development. Item number one is board approval of amendment to the ARPC, B O C C agreement. Ms. Daniels?
This is a board, requesting board approval of an amendment to the agreement dated twelve, twelve, twenty-three between ARPC and the Board for Technical Planning Assistance for the Update to the Comprehensive Plan. Article one of the agreement changes the administrator to Justin Steele, Senior Growth Management Planner. Uh, the scope of work moves task five to deliverable two. The deliverable due dates are amended to four thirty twenty-four for deliverable one and eight thirty-one twenty-four for deliverable two. Uh, text was removed for updating the code of ordinances as planning will update the codes. Uh, we're also requesting that the board set a date for a workshop for the draft to be presented to the board.
Okay.
Go ahead and make a motion. We approve the request. What date are you suggesting?
Wendy, did you have a preference on when?
Actually, Commissioner's Justin Steele, the Growth Management Planner, is online.
Okay.
And he would like to just give you a brief overview on that. Caroline Smith with Economic, uh, the Economic Development Planner is here in person, and they can speak to that a little better.
Okay. Justin, Justin, are you online and can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can.
Okay, go ahead, please, sir.
Uh, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Justin Steele. I'm the Growth Management Planner for, uh, the ARPC at this point. Um, we are requesting an amendment to the contract to move it one month, uh, back into April. Additionally, we're, we'd like to know when would the board like to have that first workshop?
Okay, well, let's, let's take the approval of the amendment first, which we've got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. And we get a second from Commissioner Crutchfield, that is to approve the amendment as described, uh, by us. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. The second question from Justin is, uh, when do we want to schedule that workshop?
And you got? How long do we need? How long will it take to do the briefing?
Uh, the briefing shouldn't take much, much time. I'd say thirty-five, thirty to forty-five minutes.
Okay.
Can we do it the last meeting in April?
That would be preferable. Maybe do it at four thirty?
What's the date?
Five o'clock, five o'clock. How about, and the, the, uh, date of the second meeting in April is?
April twenty-third.
April twenty-third. Justin, with April twenty-third, uh, which is a Tuesday evening, uh, at five o'clock, work for you guys?
There is another public hearing in Havana that night. Um, are there any other dates that may be available?
I'm sure there are. Um, any?
What about May? Is that too late?
Is May too late? And again, it always works better to do the second meeting in May, but is that pushing it out too far, Justin?
If, if that's what the board would like, we can accommodate that.
I think that would work.
So that would be May twenty-eighth.
Okay, at five o'clock. Okay, chair will entertain a motion to set a workshop for May twenty-eighth. Is that right, Willan?
Yes.
Uh, May twenty-eighth at five o'clock. Okay, I got a second from Commissioner Brans. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, it stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Justin, anything else that you need to bring to our attention or any other action that are requested from the board?
No, sir, not at this time. I thank you for allowing the ARPC to help you with this project, and we look forward to the progress we're gonna make for Jackson County.
Okay, and we look forward to, uh, working with you and our continued, uh, working relationship with ARPC.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move right down, uh, the agenda to, uh, reports and requests. I trust everyone's had a chance to look at the consent agenda. Unless there's any questions, chair will entertain a motion to approve. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to approve the consent agenda. Second from Commissioner Brans. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number two, which is a, a report, uh, this is the broadband feasibility report. Tim? Arbiter? Did I say the second, your last? Got it. Very good. Good evening.
That he screws up everybody. So, uh, Tim Arbiter with Finley Engineering.
Yes.
And online is not me, uh, but Mr. Doug Dawson with CCG Consulting, he is online. But in order to preserve time, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, uh, and, uh, Manager Daniels, um, Doug is gonna stay quiet, which is, you probably haven't heard of in these days. Uh, he can give me trouble later for saying that. Uh, but we're your two, uh, kind of partners in crime on this broadband feasibility study. Doug is actually going to share his screen just to preserve, uh, some of my time up here on the podium. So he's firing it up right now. We will get a copy of this presentation, uh, to Rhett and team that will be disseminated to you. But, um, next slide, Doug.
Can you see it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
So, primary scope of the study, identify homes and businesses that lack broadband, high-quality internet in your county. This has been a top priority for you. Uh, it's been a long time coming for this report to come to you now. Uh, we've been working with your leadership. Uh, well before the study, we did a mapping report. Uh, we did a lot of sessions with leadership and with the technical advisory team. Uh, so it's, it's now culminated in this report that we show you today. Uh, but in essence, in addition, the other scope of this project was to look at, you know, how much it would take to build a high-speed internet to all of your remaining residents and businesses in the county that are without it. And then literally being a tool for not only you as elected officials, but your leadership in advocating and pursuing the funding necessary to close that digital divide gap from an infrastructure standpoint. So those are the three primary things. Next slide. Better start my timer. Willan said I only had twenty minutes. So, I'm not gonna read this slide to you. This is all stuff you know. Uh, but your existing telecom providers, AT&amp;T, Consolidated, Century Link, your cable providers, Comcast and Charter. Uh, we did notice some fiber being built by Century Link under, under the, the name Quantum Fiber. Uh, many of these telcos use a branded name and cable companies, uh, when they're building out new services. Fixed wireless is being deployed by Point Broadband. And then we also noticed many of your residents and businesses are using satellite and cellular broadband, uh, for their services for internet. And then while, uh, they haven't quite built yet, there's been many conversations and, and interest in the winners of some federal subsidies through Conexon and Windstream, uh, to build out the rural portions of your county. And you're gonna see that in a map here in a minute. Next slide. So one of the things, what, part of the study, we were able to dive into twenty thousand four hundred and seventy-six speed tests that are in your county. Uh, this is very rich and wonderful data that helps us paint a picture, maybe good and bad picture of broadband in your county. And this is what it's telling us. A cable, on average, about two hundred and seventy megabits down, twenty-one megabits up. DSL, which is the old copper, thirteen by two, fiber, almost three hundred by three hundred, which is great. Satellite fifty by six, and then fixed wireless slash cellular at just shy of forty by eight. So again, very disparate in the technologies and what we're looking at. But this is very rich data that really helped us, uh, get in deeper on the data, uh, and actually tell us some very pointed areas in your county to go look at during the field review. Next slide. So if we believed everything the FCC told us, uh, this is what your map would tell us when we first started this study. So the areas in blue are in unserved areas. Areas in yellow are underserved, areas are served. So what this means is, is from the colors is blue and yellow would be by the FCC grant eligible, if you will, for lack of a better term. The served areas mean that there's currently broadband going on in those spaces. But your county in particular has so much going on from funded areas, from like ArdoF, uh, from some recent state grants, that really, whenever we look at all your data, this is really what your map would look at like. Uh, next slide, Doug. So a lot more orange, and this is, and you're gonna see a few more maps to, to line this out a little bit further. A lot more oranges served, either is currently receiving high-speed broadband or will receive through the federal investments and the state investments, uh, in those various companies that should be and ought to be building out, uh, broadband to your, to your residents and your businesses.
What kind of timeline are you looking at?
Well, that's a great question. Hang tight on that one. Let me get to that slide and I'll actually address that individually. So next slide, Doug. So when we looked at the FCC data, it told us about seven thousand eight hundred were unserved, two thousand nine hundred were underserved. And again, all total about twenty-six thousand three hundred passings total in your county that are what were called broadband serviceable locations. Sometimes you'll hear the acronym BSLs, like you need another acronym to remember, right, guys? Um, but when we looked at the areas that are already served, the areas that will be served by new construction, this is actually what's left. Seventeen hundred unserved, just shy of a thousand underserved, and again, served at twenty-three thousand six hundred. Next slide. So here's getting into those funded areas. What's going on? There's so much of your territory in your county that's being covered by awarded companies going to build broadband in your county. With Charter, with four and forty-five locations, we have no worry there. Charter's been building out countrywide, no issues. Uh, Conexon, this has been, uh, a regular topic of discussion amongst leadership. And I know that they have conversed with the county on several occasions, uh, on their desire to build this area out. This is one of the strategies. We will ask that the county keep a keen eye on and get regular updates from Conexon on what their activities are and what they're doing, uh, as it relates to building out the six thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight locations that they're supposed to be doing under the ArdoF. And then Windstream, one, uh, four hundred and seventy locations, again, don't have a concern there. But I would say on this particular one, ArdoF is probably in its, out of a six-year construction build, most of these providers are starting to approach their four-year mark. So they really need to be doing something. Uh, if not, they're gonna need to start talking to the FCC about why they're not doing what they should be doing. And then finally, this is just recently on the, on the, not too long ago, uh, Comcast was a winner, uh, in your Florida program. So congratulations to them. Uh, they are gonna do a thousand eighty-two residents, thirty businesses, with an estate award of about just a little over two million dollars. And I do know that they've been regular attenders of the Technical Planning Committee. I know that they talked to leadership recently, so they're highly engaged. So congratulations to them. Next slide. So this is a pictorial representation of those ArdoF areas. So Charter's, uh, light blue, Conexon is yellow, Windstream is purple. So as you can see, that's why a lot of your area is orange or served, or will be served. So this is a very interesting dynamic for your accounting as we watch this. Next slide, Doug. So here are those state awarded areas that we're watching those. Uh, so congratulations to Comcast. Those are big pockets. What's interesting here is that, um, the state looked at these particular areas and looked at what was going on in the ArdoF and didn't see much going on, so they awarded in this area. So some states do do that, and that's unique. Uh, but congratulations to Comcast. Next slide. So this is the, uh, some of the data results from the statistically valid telephone survey. And if I could say that three more times, I would be done for the night. Uh, but here's some of the, uh, the data statistics that Doug and his team dove deep on. And what they found out is sixteen percent of the households don't have broadband at all. Forty-three percent of the respondents use broadband for work or school from home. And many of the, many of those respondents do the work from home multiple days per week. And then forty-six percent of the respondents said, there's not enough broadband for us to do work or school at home. Thirty-one percent of the respondents said there's lack, a lack of workable cell coverage in your county. And then fifty-two percent of your residents spend over eighty dollars per month. And that's one of the highest, uh, rates that we've seen in the nation for the, for the studies that we watch nationwide and work on. And then fifty-one percent of the respondents said they would buy a new, new, new fiber network if available. And then nineteen percent said that they would probably buy. So that's about seventy-two percent, almost three quarters of, of those in the So that's about 72%, almost three quarters of those in the, in the survey so that they would be interested in something new if they got something better. Next slide. Here's your business survey results. Not reliable. Businesses complained about slowdowns, multiple day outages, regular, regular outages to their system. And then they can't work at all when the broadband is down. Just as many of the households face the struggles, your businesses are also going to experience the same thing. And what's probably the most frustrating is the businesses don't have a choice. There's not choice for them to make a decision on going somewhere else. The inability for them to use software, upload files, and then be able to participate in meetings like a Zoom meeting for Doug to participate from North Carolina here. You can't do that in your rural portion of your county. And then we also heard again, your cellular service in your county is also poor and very significant pockets of the county, making it awful, awful, also difficult when you don't have the broadband at your home and you don't have the cell coverage on your phone, you're literally in what's called an internet desert. You have nothing to communicate or participate in. Next slide. Now we're heading into, okay, so we know all this data, what do we do with it? So we took all this data and when we looked at the actual design itself of the system, these are some of the key factors that we do at Finley Engineering in consultation with CCG. We look at, you know, the largest investment, the longest estimated life of the infrastructure. So think about when you're putting in a road or a bridge, you know, you're wanting that thing to, to last a long time. We look forward in, in our design plans as we look at all of the, all the things that residents and businesses use the internet for, for home, for school, for all of the creative work, the data rich things that folks need of today. And then also we look at the definition of broadband, even just with the recent determination by the FCC that speed definitions need to get higher in their core definitions as a federal agency. Next slide.
What did the speed go to?
Speed minimum definitions right now is 100 megabits down, 20 megabits up.
Yeah, but I thought they just changed it.
They just, it was 25, 3. So they're catching up with the game because NTIA, many states in the nation had elevated their speed definitions. It just takes the FCC some time. They're, they're not a fast agency. Technology, your RFP asked us to look at multiple different technologies. So we looked at fiber, we looked at fixed wireless. As you can expect, your difficulties in terrain, tree lines, whatever, what have you, there's not a real comprehensive fixed wireless solution. So we looked at the fiber solution would be the best fit for your county. We use what's called an XGS pond technology and that can deliver 10 gigabit service to your, your residents and your businesses. Most residents don't take that, but some businesses do. So when we looked at all your data of what was left, there's about 2,700 passings. And that, that was about 116 miles, fiber miles that we needed to cover the pockets of your county. It's just a kind of a key diagram of what a fiber to the home network looks like and how it's organized in, in particular for your county. So this is just a graphical representation of that. Next slide, Doug. So here are some other key considerations. We looked at, you know, the fiber network as it relates to aerial construction. When we did the field review, we noticed heavily that aerial was the preferred route to go. Buried is super duper expensive. But when we were running around, aerial was the predominant way how much of your fiber and your cable was strong in portions of the county. We looked at different models, as I already said, the 10 gigabit service across the entire network, one data center. And then we also, when we design these things, we don't design it for today, we designed it for tomorrow. We build an extra fiber for that growth opportunity as you would experience when you get a new infrastructure like fiber development. Next slide. Okay, so you're probably squinting right now trying to look at these different. But when you are the premier example of the Swiss cheese effect that we speak about nationally, that there are handful of pockets left in your county. When we look at those blue and yellow areas of your, of your county, this is what's left. But we designed the system as knowing you already have multiple providers building or should be building soon in your county of what it would take to bolt on to those expansion areas. So that's kind of how we designed your system in those very remote pocket areas. But within those areas, if you go to the next slide, Doug, here's a little bit more of a granular view. So you're looking at Magnolia, Magnolia Road and Highway 73. So here's just a little pocket right off of there. So again, it's a fiber design to all the locations that are inside there. This is the guts of a fiber of the home design, if you will.
What are the different colors represent?
The different, different colors means the number of fiber strands. Next slide. So here's just another pocket, again, more denser area, you see a lot more yellow dots, which are more locations that are designed past, so you don't see a ton of fiber colors, but you see a ton of locations. So this is a denser pocket in your county. So again, we kind of zoomed in a little bit more and we have all this data and it's available to you guys. And with leadership and commissions permission for those providers that may be interested in this, we, we can make this available to them as well. Next slide, Doug. So drum roll P please, this is the sticker shock. When you look at those 2,700 passings that are left in your county, doing a fiber of the home design, you're looking at about 16.7 million with a prevailing wage factor. We, we equated that in case prevailing wage becomes an issue in the bead grants, we're running both scenarios. So the counties and providers are aware of it. But that's about a $19.3 million spend. And as you can see, the cost per passing per location, not terrible as you look at the pocket areas. Certainly this number goes higher if these fiber routes have to go longer distances to get connected somewhere else. But this is your cost. Next slide.
That's doing aerial.
Yes, sir.
What about plow?
Plowed, we'd have to run the number, but we probably would look at probably a two and a half X factor on that.
Well, your report indicated plowing was cheaper.
No, reported actually would be a little bit more expensive, so if I would need.
That's what I thought, but that's not what your report said.
I would double, I'll double check that.
Okay.
So next slide. So Doug and his team run the analysis of what the break even point is. So they work at the, the amount of dollars they would need from a grant standpoint, from a prevailing wage scenario, which is typically the highest amount of dollars you would need. And when Doug had ran this particular scenario, using conservative assumptions, grant funding is feasible to go in on this because bead funding is at a 75, 25, 75% grant, 25% provider, providers submitted match, if you will. So looking at the break even point. And most providers, when you look at the penetration rate, it's the adoption rate that they're looking at. So a 50% plus is probably pretty generous. Most providers are probably putting in 45 to 55% penetration. So even at those numbers, the breaking point for the grant works at the prevailing wage. And it gets better when you look at a, a project that is not prevailing wage. So this is the extreme. Next slide, Doug. So we keep talking about bead. This is the 42 and a half billion dollar national fund, Florida at 1.1 billion. Currently, as it stands right now, Florida is still awaiting its approval on their volume one to be approved by NTIA. That may change in the coming week or coming weeks. That changes daily as it relates to what the, the NTIA will approve for states. So watching that closely because that starts other processes for the state of Florida. And so once that ball gets rolling, it'll be a little bit of time for the state to get their, get their Ps and Qs together. But it's on the near horizon. I would say mid to late 2024, we're probably going to see a high amount of bead activity. So your timing is very right for this. Our US, which is the USDA, which is the Department of Agriculture, has launched a $700 million fund that's actually due in late May. But it has very prescribed ways that they can fund pockets in your county, which might make it difficult for providers to pursue with such a short timer. And there will be also other funding available for digital literacy efforts through the bead program or through IIJA. And so those will come later, probably in tandem with a little bit of infrastructure, but probably just following the infrastructure money.
What is bead an acronym for?
Broadband Equity and Access. You know, when we look at that particular acronym, and I'm, I'm forgetting the D, Doug.
I don't know either.
Deployment, I think that's what that D is. And we're going to go to the next slide. So Commissioner Pecar, glad you read the report. Definitely will check up on that, but that, there's 188 pages of that report in there. But these are some of the strategic questions that we look at on the go forward. Getting involved in bead. Commissioner Pecar, you've been on the forefront of this to get ready for that big tranche of money that is coming, and it is coming. And so getting the county well positioned. The next thing is looking at your winners of the existing programs, the state grant, the ARDOF, keeping in close contact with those providers, making sure that they're continually and regularly updating the county on their efforts. Because what if anything were to happen to one of those funded areas that something is not going to happen? We would need to know ASAP in order to get ready for maybe round one of bead or round two of bead. It's just watching that very intently. You got some competition, gap issues, and as our, as we've already spoken about a couple of times, the cellular coverage in your county. The FCC is moving through the motions now of starting that $9 billion fund for increasing cellular coverage in the nation. So I think there's a real opportunity there when you look at strategic next steps with cell coverage and what could be brought home for the county itself. Next slide. So the bead grants itself, state of Florida, much like some other states in the union, are actually giving a fair amount of points to providers who really get involved at the local level, at the county level, whether there be a letter of support, working with your technical planning team, as well as if they're able to maybe secure some local match dollars, whether that be a city, county dollars or whatever would have you. So look at the number of points that they get if they were able to secure that. So what does that do? That puts them in a very good position with the state when they look at competing with other providers that may not have the, that level of support from your county or your city. So you do have a big role in this bead process. And certainly, and, and we've said it a couple of times, to proactively keep in front of your ISPs, especially the ones who are, who are winners in previous subsidy and grant rounds. Next slide.
Now, who'll take the lead on that coordination between ARDOF and bead for what's mechanic concern?
So as far as ARDOF, that is through the Federal Communications Commission. So the FCC works directly with the providers in making those allocations. Now, both one of like Conexon, let's just use Conexon for example. I know Conexon has met with city or county leadership on a couple of different occasions. And so the actual coordination itself, there's really no, no really kind of ability for the county to interject in that kind of deployment is really the arrangement between the provider and the FCC with the ARDOF itself. Now with the state grants with Comcast, I do know that they did come in and meet with county leaders to brief them on, on the, on the state awards, as well as their interest in doing future things in the county. So again, it's, it's all about coordination of those particular meetings, keeping abreast of that and what those providers are doing. But on the go forward, I think it, it really would be probably a good idea to probably at least have bi-monthly or quarterly sessions with each of those providers, one on one, as a way just to keep the dialogues going in case something were to happen or an opportunity presents itself.
Alex, we do have the local technology planning group.
Yep.
Supposed to be leading the way.
Yep. And then my final slide, Doug. We've already kind of talked about this already, you know, tackling the next steps, reaching out to the ISPs, getting the community involved when the time is right, especially as we look at the digital equity and digital access type of opportunities that may exist. And then looking from a county standpoint, what if any, and there may not be, are there things from a development standpoint that may be accelerated or looked at when you look at future deployments happening in the county? And then also maybe a coordinated effort on the cellular speed tests as we look at that $9 billion fund that's coming down the road for cell towers, so.
I got a question on that.
Yes, sir.
How many speed tests do you need?
I can answer that. You need a lot. So what, what they're doing, you have to do a pretty large number of speed tests in, in any given census block. So it's, you're going to need thousands of cellular speed tests.
Do we have the ability to determine where the speed test was conducted from?
Yes, sir, because it's a cell phone. So wherever you get out of your car and take the speed test along the side of the road, that's where it comes. Yes, sir.
Maybe we can reach out to the FFA. Groups here in the county.
Yep.
Yes.
We set up a program and I'll put up $100 whoever gets the most.
So Commissioner, and this is the great thing about the cellular speed tests, they're on these things.
Oh, I know. With home broadband. Kids are everywhere.
Well, with home broadband, we always have the, the folks take them on these things when they should be taking them on their laptop. That's really how, you know, home speed tests really should work. But yes, Doug is right, it's going to take a, a fair number of.
When do we need to start on those?
I'd say as soon as possible because there, there, wasn't it this last week, Doug, they officially.
They're probably going to announce this grant near the end of this year. So this whole year, we should be taking the test.
Maybe offline, we can discuss it.
Yes, sir.
Yep, I kids.
Yep.
They're everywhere.
They are.
All right, I was three minutes over.
You're not finished.
Oh.
Yeah, they may have questions.
Yes, absolutely.
You mentioned the USDA.
Yeah.
And I remember being in a conference where the director of the NTIA, I said, he mentioned farmers.
Yes.
And they were stressing that they would give special credit for farmers. Do we, are we going to get that special attention in bead and ARDOF?
Yes.
Because of the farmers?
Yes, because one of the things that we, Doug and I have seen this in a, a number of different state programs and Florida probably would be no different, is they've started to stratify the sectors by residential businesses, farms, anchor institutions. And so farms have, have delineated into, and when we say farms, we mean farmers and ranchers. That's kind of a combined assumption. And so whenever we're doing your high level design based on your county data, if it is an ag with a residential home on it, we typically delineate that as a farm. Now, when we're actually doing the design itself, we, we do try to flag those farms. So when it comes to grant time, we can pull that number out. Because when it comes to the reviewers, I mean, the homes are extremely important, the businesses are just as important. But sometimes those farmer count will give you some additional points too.
Well, when you're doing that, don't forget tree farmers.
Yes, sir.
That's a very good point.
That's a big, that's a big deal in this county.
You see a bunch of trees, that could be a tree farm. So I think what 68% of our GDP is, comes from agriculture.
Yes, sir. We, and we interviewed a lot of your tree farmers as part of the study, yes, sir.
Where are we on the FCC mapping challenge?
So the next challenge that will come out will be the Florida bead challenge. And so whenever they get their approval from NTIA on their volume one, which is their instructions on how they'll exercise the bead, that would really be the next one in line. And then really from a, from a FCC standpoint, it is an ongoing challenge. Right now, you can go on to the map. Individuals, businesses can actually challenge the locations that I actually don't get the service that's being reported to my home or business today.
Are y'all doing any of that?
Typically, it is, it is one of those cumbersome processes to do, much like telephone surveys, much like cells, speed tests. Many people hear it, but then they don't execute on it. And it has to come from the consumer. It is a very consumer driven standpoint. Really, when I bring up the bead process, it's really that opportunity where it's going to allow the counties and the cities, nonprofits, anchor institutions, the ability to say, whoa, 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 there's a lot of locations in my county that are being reported quote unquote served, but it's inferior technology or it's overstated because they're protecting a territory. So really the bead challenge is probably the next distinct opportunity to open up some. So really the bead challenge is probably the next distinct opportunity to open up some locations for some additional funding.
Yeah, we, yes, sir. We only have identified about fifty locations that we need to put in for that challenge. So we're gonna work with you to make sure those get counted. So.
How many?
About fifty.
Fifty.
Yeah, unfortunately, all that ARDOF map that covers all the stuff that we can't do anything about. So.
Have y'all talked to, uh, connects on?
It, it's been, um, a little while since we chatted with them and didn't have much to report since the last time before we chatted with them. So, but one of that's, one of the key recommendations going forward is to keep constant contact with them.
Have you talked with West Florida Electric?
Yes. Yes.
Recently?
Uh, it's been about two or three weeks ago when I chatted with them last and they hadn't, um, uh, they hadn't really kind of taken up the next course of action in that regard. So.
Will Ann, is there any, uh, board action that we need to be considering to take tonight, uh, relative to any of this?
Uh, well, it's further down the agenda, but we are going to be asking for a task five with Finley. If y'all wanted to address that while he's at the podium. I do think it's important, um, as far as having that support on the next phase of things. Do you kind of want to review what that all entails?
What? This is item number eleven.
I have one question here, but you mentioned about the eight dollars per resident on high end. What you look at for us to average low-end cost?
Sure. Um, Doug, you want to take that? Did you hear that?
Yeah, your, your average in the county is still also high. The total overall average was, is in the range of almost seventy dollars. So, but and there, something like thirty percent of people are spending more than a hundred dollars. I mean, it's one of the, and the reason for that is the satellite's very expensive and, uh, the hotspots are very expensive and that's what an awful lot of people have. So.
There is also a federal program, I think where they can get it for nine ninety-five or something like that.
Yeah, there's, there's the lifeline program and then also exiting from the field right now is the ACP program, which is the thirty dollar a month. And unfortunately, I think that's on, uh, a final death nail, if you will. Uh, folks are thinking that it's gonna reinvigorate itself, either, uh, probably just after the election. Um, but as it stands right now, that, that program is probably gonna go away officially, uh, which is actually gonna be extremely unfortunate because I think it's been very successful in getting low, low income families that, that internet subsidy, if you will, to help with connectivity. Uh, but unfortunately, I think it's, 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 it's dead. Uh, and something new is gonna have to be done by Congress and it's up to Congress to make that decision. Doug, anything you want to add to that?
Now, we can get you more detail of the pricing. There's some stuff in the study on it. Your, your pricing is truly the highest one I've seen in the last year. So, and what people pay there. So.
So if we decide to hire you guys for another year, what are y'all going to do for Jackson County?
Sure. First and foremost, getting you ready for the Florida State Beat Challenge map, getting that as tight as we can to ensure that the number of locations that are put in towards the challenge that the state really takes it into consideration and the evidence supplied and, and everything in the study will be that evidence that we can provide to the state uh, to back that up, to hopefully gain those locations that we challenge in that. The next thing will also be that coordination with, uh, the providers that are going to be building, are building and that want to build into your county. Uh, you as a leadership and with county leaders would have to decide what that looks like because there's a couple of different paths that you can take. Uh, and currently Doug and I are, are helping about four or five different counties right now, uh, across the nation, help trying to herd the cats, if you will, from the provider community, um, which provider or providers that you would like to submit that letter of support for. You would have to determine as a county, if you want to put resources, uh, to the table to help with the match, that's not necessary or required. But we, Doug and I would assist you in that coordination, that facilitation and making it kind of an, an easy lift and not one to be kind of stressed about and trying to make that determination.
Do you have any ISPs that are not in the county that might be interested in coming to the county?
Well, that's one of the.
We do, we do. We actually do know several. Yes, sir. So.
I'm sorry.
We do know, we do know several who are interested. Yes, sir. So.
Yep. So we do have, basically they would be new players to your market. So.
Yep.
And what would be the timeline for being able to do those, uh, tasks? I mean, are we looking at over a year period or less?
No, no, sir. They're gonna happen in the next three, four months, pretty quick. So.
Lion's share of that is gonna be the next three or four months, as Doug said. There may be some ongoing support beyond that, but it'd be limited, but it really is also contingent on how the staging is set for the Florida bead. You know, bead process itself, because if, if there are multiple rounds to the state program, we want to make sure that you're getting the support in, in the first, the second. I don't know if there'll be a third, uh, probably not.
Well, and one, one of the strongest things that Tim didn't mention is we want to make sure everybody gets covered. I mean, that's the number one thing. So.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, we don't want to build half the county.
No, sir. We do not.
And we're looking at about a, an eighty-three thousand dollar cost for.
Oh, no, no, no.
What's, what's?
So number eleven, the packet is to renew their contract for another year. And then number eighteen on your additions is for task five, which is a seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
I think that's was the number.
Um, that is for task five, seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars, um, which would come from our broadband services line item. We do have some funds available there. So asking to renew the contract for a year and issue task number five.
And that, that dollar amount is a not to exceed and will only bill for actual work. So there's a little bit of travel involved. Is it, if we do not travel here, we won't charge for that. So.
Does that include the, uh, challenge?
Yes, it does.
Yes, sir.
So you've heard the, uh, explanation and, uh, chair of entertaining motions. Is that motion, is that for both to renew the contract and to, uh, approve the task work?
Tasked.
Okay. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Anything, any other information that would be pertinent to, uh, this decision before we vote, vote on it?
Yeah, it's been absolutely wonderful to work with. Uh, there are, there are some folks across the country that are very difficult to work with and you are not one of those.
Very, very thorough presentation and I, I certainly appreciate you taking the time to go through it and explain it the way that you did.
I really questioned that FCC now totally. I, I seriously doubt we got half the service that they're saying.
Yep.
Um, the cell service, everybody in here can tell you is worse than worse. You know, it's horrible.
Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Hearing no other questions, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you again for, uh, coming and joining us and making presentations.
Exiting station. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, uh, we've completed item number two. Uh, item number three is a board approval of the TDC sponsorship reimbursement. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, the, uh, during the TDC's March meeting, board members reviewed the final evaluation packet for the twenty twenty-three Optimus Club tournament and approved reimbursement of ten thousand dollars.
For the, uh, explanation and request, got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item number four is also a TDC request. It's board approval for a digital marketing campaign. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, the TDC board voted to approve a three-month marketing campaign with Carrigan Marketing to improve online visibility through Google. This campaign will cost six thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and aligns with the TDC's five-year marketing plan.
Thank you for the explanation. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from like a Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign, motion carries unanimously. Continuing down the agenda, item number five is, uh, the board approval uh, of a renewal of our medical director services contract with Dr. Colby Scott Redfield. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, this is a renewed annually. It will come before you again when the new retirement rates are released, but we are requesting approval uh, for now and then June or July, you'll get an update or an amendment to the contract with the new retirement rate.
We have very few options as far as these services go.
Correct.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item, uh, number six is board approval of an amendment to, uh, our mosquito control contract. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, these were just to update the reporting forms and deliverable deadlines for the agreement.
Okay.
No moves, chairman.
A motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion also carries unanimously. Item number seven, board approval of an amendment to our cultural facilities grant for the Endeavor Museum. Ms. Daniels?
Uh, yes, this is an amendment one to the cultural facilities grant for Jackson County Endeavor Museum Phase One. Uh, renovation will extend the current deadline from, uh, six one twenty-four until twelve thirty one twenty-four.
Okay.
I'm, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Peacock.
Is this going to take care of the holes that are in the roof?
Yes. That is the intent to replace the roof with this grant.
Yeah, yes. And it will not only just replace the roof.
I mean, we had.
Replace the roof structure as well.
We had tarp's on it and.
Plus a lot of the trusses are severely damaged.
Were they? Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock.
Yep.
Second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item, uh, number eight is board approval of a variation to the design for the Popular Springs Road. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, this is a variation memo is for low-volume design criteria for Popular Springs Road and this has to do with the, uh, less than four hundred vehicles per day. I guess we can submit a, uh, ret, a memo requesting that it not have to come to the same standard.
Right. So there's some clear zone issues related to existing infrastructure, primarily power poles. Um, we have limited ride away. There's not enough room to move the poles out of the clear zone. Um, so this was provided by, uh, engineer record at Audi Howell. And this is an option that they've seen in other places that they will just do a design memo, you know, stating the issues and why they're setting the speed limit based on the sites, not necessarily just the traffic and conditions, but there's more factors involved.
This helps reduce the liability on the county as well.
That's the intent. Yes, sir.
Got a question. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock.
Second.
Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number nine is board approval of change order number one for the Endeavor Convention Center. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, the Endeavor Convention Center had several items removed from the original bid, uh, to bring the project into budget. There now appears to be sufficient funding to add back two items. Um, first of all, construction of raised podium and stage area in the amount of forty-five thousand. Uh, Jip Ford drywall and insulation around the interior of the main assembly area, also in the amount of forty-five thousand.
You've heard the explanation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we're wasting forty-five thousand dollars by building a stage. I have said from the beginning and when we started talking about this thing how many years ago? The room would be versatile. We could use it for a lot of different things. We don't need a permanent stage. We want to have a stage. You can get risers or you can get temporary stages that can be constructed. And we may want to get a temporary and we put it up, it stays up. But you may want to use the room oriented this way. I may want to use it oriented that way. We don't need a permanent stage.
We, we've heard that argument before.
And you'll keep hearing it.
I've disagreed with it and I think, uh, a majority of the committee disagrees with it and the recommendation is to move forward with a permanent stage and these are both items. I think that timing wise, uh, need to be decided on quickly, uh, because if we don't, uh, uh, and I know, uh, David's out there in the audience, but if we don't make a decision on these, uh, to make the change later on will be more costly. So I think it's a timing issue.
Well, I'm opposed to it.
You made that, you made that about.
And I will vote against it. So when you call for it, I will know.
Well, most of the places like that do have stages.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, cause I mean, you know, having some performance come in of speaking or even singing or some kind of, you know, there for higher up where people would sit.
You can put a temporary one in that can be moved from one location to the other.
The problem is, is they very.
And we may decide we want to do something other than just speaking.
Yeah, but the problem is, is those temporary stages because of the amount of manpower uh, and resources that take to set them up and take them down. They, they never get, they don't get you, they don't get moved. The one at Chipola has been like that for a decade. You know, to me, the, and, and again, I'll let David speak to this if he wants to, but, uh, uh, you know, we're, uh, trying to attract nicer events and, and a permanent stage would be and a nicer amenity than a temporary stage.
I don't see where the stage being permanent or temporary makes any difference in the event you host. In fact, if you have a temporary stage, you can change it and host other events. We're locking the county into something that I don't think we should.
How big is the stage gonna be?
Twenty.
I'm looking at, yeah.
Twenty-five.
You're taking away a lot of seating that could be utilized. Plus you gotta tear out the flooring.
If you go have that much seating, you need a stage for somebody.
Well, you'll have a, you will have a stage. What I'm saying is don't make it permanent.
Yeah, we kind of what we, I compared with and the committee is we got two facilities in, in the county that's used a lot and that's RCC and Chipola Fine Arts and, uh, and to me, there's no comparison to them and Chipola Fine Arts has, as Paul was saying, a permanent, uh, or temporary stage there and and it's, uh, it's been that way for a long time over.
But it's a theater.
What's that?
It's a theater.
No, no.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the fine arts building. Cultural arts, uh, building.
Oh, the old gym.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, the old gym.
Performing Arts Center has a permanent stage.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, and, uh, and all our, you know, kind of looking at what, you know, RCC has a premier event, you know, with a permanent stage, you can put the, uh, the, uh, uh, TV screens up there and it uses, make your sound permanent and you know, there's nothing that compares, uh, to that with the permanent. So I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but, and I think, you know, you always want to kind of have the long way to as a stage so that you're closer. If you do the long way, the other way, then, you know, you're so far away from it.
For, for the configuration.
I think it'll make it a first-class facility. I think if we don't do that, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be like the Cultural Arts Center at Chipola. That's, you know, I appreciate them, but it's not a, that's not a first-class facility. RCC, the way they've got it is a first-class facility. And, and so all the FFAs and everybody, you know, go to RCC for their vanquits and, and all.
Yeah, and, and for this facility, and we got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield to go ahead and approve the change order for this facility because of the, the configuration of the space and access to the bathrooms, access to the kitchen, the stage kitchen area and access from the lobby. There's really only one place that you can put the stage. It, it can't go anywhere else. And as David said, you really want your stage facing the short direction so that your audience is, is more, it's closer to the stage and not so far away from it. So.
When we started talking about this, we were talking about possibly using it to do volleyball tournaments.
Yeah, I, I've known the city of Marianna is in the process of, of building a multi-use type facility. They'll, that'll probably handle, handle that. Um, I think this, this really is being designed less as a recreational facility and more as a conference convention performance facility. Uh, it's hard to design it for both. Anyway, we got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield, a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries four to one. Thank you, David. Item number, uh, ten. Yes, item number ten is a board approval of a special meeting for the TDC strategic planning presentations.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
We have two, uh, companies have submitted, we're requesting to set a special meeting for eight fifteen on Tuesday, April night before the regular board meeting to hear from those two companies.
You said eight fifteen?
Wow.
Oh, eight.
Ahead of the regular meeting, or it could be following. That's just harder to time for the companies on what time?
So what date?
April ninth.
April ninth.
Let's do it afterwards.
Hmm?
Do it afterwards.
After the meeting?
Meeting, yeah. She said we could do it either way.
It's just like you say, it's.
Is that okay, Kelsey?
And we got two presenters and we're giving them us. And we got two presenters, and we're giving them a specific amount of time to make their presentations?
So I would set it for ten o'clock, but then, of course, your regular meeting may go past that, but you can roll right into it if you were to have a short meeting.
So if we, if we want to, if we're not complete with the regular agenda, we can go ahead and uh, post, terminate that meeting and then do the presentations.
That, or you can just finish out your meeting, but you're just not having any time in between.
Okay, ten o'clock, uh, in front of our next meeting. Got a motion?
Yep.
Motion for Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch, any questions, comments, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number eleven, which we've already taken care of, item number twelve is board approval of the annual Microsoft true-up order, Ms. Daniels.
Uh, yes, this is a true-up agreement for Microsoft licensing of software and services, which is just saying, we've looked and we are agreeing, we're only using the amount of licenses we're supposed to be using.
Heard the explanation, got a motion from Commissioner Branch.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Peacock, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item number thirteen, board approval of a Unity Fiber Internet Contract for the Jackson County Public Libraries, Ms. Daniels.
The con- this contract is for Unity Fiber Internet Services at the Marianna and Graceville branches of the Jackson County Public Library. Uh, we're getting a significantly better service um, that will be covered by something called E-Rate Discount, which will cover approximately ninety percent of the total cost of the services. I believe that we will land with seventy-two, seventy-two dollars per site after the discount.
Okay, very good.
No moves.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney, any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number fourteen, board approval of Comcast Internet and TV Services for the Fire Rescue Station, Ms. Daniels.
This is a contract that will also give better internet service as well as basic cable TV for a service at Fire Rescue Station One. We are reducing two internet connections down to the one, and this is a budgeted expense.
No moves, chair, saving anybody?
McKinney, question from Commissioner Peacock?
Yeah, are we saving any money?
I'm not sure, was it, is it about a wash, coming out about even?
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please sign, signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion, that motion also carries unanimously. Item number fifteen, under the additions to the agenda is a board approval to enter into a participating party agreement with Consolidated Bottling LLC.
David's going to present this.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes. Commissioner Peacock hit a home run with this one by standing in the line and uh, piggly wiggly and sneezes and uh, having a discussion with Cody McDaniel, and uh, so in many way, there, that led to uh, their desire to uh, build a uh, milk processing bottling facility uh, here uh, at our Endeavor uh, property, and uh, you've kind of worked on it before as Project Jaws, but uh, our Project Blue Sky, the grant funds on that have been um, in place, and uh, we've gone through uh, quite different stages, but we're gonna be able to merge the Project Blue Sky with the Project Jaws to bring more money to bear to the uh, milk processing facility. And so, uh, what this agreement is, the participating party agreement is uh, for consolidated bottling, and the county agreed to uh, extend those grant funds to them, and they'll obligate to uh, create the jobs that are required by the grant, which is fifty-eight uh, jobs. It says a two million dollar investment, that's for the grant purposes, but it's actually over a sixty million dollar investment, and the project's well underway, so seeking your approval of the Internet Participating Party and force to uh, submit the amendments to the uh, both the CDBG and the EDA grants.
I have a question off.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a question from, a second, and with a question from Commissioner McKinney.
On the transfer of the thirty acres, how is that gonna be broken down for, for a company?
As what acreage it is, uh, in there, I think I have it shown in uh, and I'm not sure if that attachment got.
It is.
In there, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and. How many buildings are we constructing?
So what, what we're do- doing in this grant before was always to build a building for the company. For this grant, it's, is best, they have to have a pre-treatment wastewater pre-treatment facility before their wastewater goes into the city of Marianna, because it's a high-strength wastewater, and so it's uh, building that facility, one thing is, that makes it a lot simpler from the grant standpoint, because when we were building a building for a company, you were gonna have to collect lease from that uh, company, and then you had to remit the lease back, the lease payments back, you don't get to keep them, you have to send those back to the state, and it was a complicated uh, aspect. What'll be happening with this is, we'll just build the pre-treatment facility, and uh, they'll enter into a maintenance agreement where they, they're totally a hundred percent responsible for owning it, maintaining it, and everything like that. We did a very similar thing with Family Dollar for their fire tanks that are at the back of it, we build those with grant funds, and so the county actually owned those, uh, I think it was for seven years, but they were a hundred percent responsible for it, and kind of what your agreement is, is the way you pay them for maintaining that is that at the end of seven years, you uh, give them the property uh, on it, so it's just the way that we utilize the grant funds on it.
But, so really, there's only one building that's being constructed?
Yeah, it's actually a treatment facility, it has, it has a building over it, but it's uh,
Occupied structure.
It's not an occupied structure, it's a treatment uh, facility.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, and a second from Commissioner McKinney, any other questions? Appreciate uh, your diligence on this, I know it's been a long time coming, and a lot of road that's taken a long twist and turns, but it sounds like we're finally getting there, and the additional jobs will be.
And it's a local Jackson County, uh, kudos to Cody McDaniel, uh, cause it really, they, they wanted to build the thing in Birmingham, and uh, he were, really went to bat for Jackson County, wanting to locate it here.
Things move slow, right, David?
What's that?
I said, things move slow.
And they move.
It was Christmas.
It's amazing what you can accomplish in six years.
Very good, okay, we have a motion for Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney, any other questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you, David. Look forward to seeing that construction get started. Uh, item number sixteen is board appointment of the commissioner to the real, Regional Rural Transportation Plan Technical Advisory Committee.
Yes, uh, Caroline Smith is here, I don't know if she wanted to.
Yeah, absolutely. You would, state your name for the record, please, ma'am.
All right, good evening, Caroline Smith with Appalachian Regional Planning Council, and I'm here this evening, among other things, to uh, request appointment of a third and final member to the ARPC's Technical Advisory Committee, which will be advising on our uh, Regional Rural Transportation Plan, which is basically to uh, to prioritize transportation-related projects for the next twenty years, um, and to advocate for projects in um, areas unserved by a metropolitan planning organization to FDOT, to the Department of Transportation, that way um, we can see more transportation projects built out here.
Okay, very good, sounds like an important position, uh, who is it?
I serve on the Appalachian Regional Planning Council.
You from serving.
I would love to serve on this.
Okay, I have no problem with that. Chair Lentana motion to appoint Commissioner Peacock as the uh, member of this uh, uh, committee. Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any other questions, comments, hearing none? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Peacock is your man, we appreciate you staying uh, for the length of the, the meeting to get to this item. Item number seventeen, a board approval of Baptist College Sidewalk, this is closeout documents, Ms. Daniels.
Um, yes, uh, Jackson County received a, a LAP grant, and this project was awarded to Southeast Construction, all work has been completed and inspected, and is ready to be closed out. Uh, there is one correction, the contractor name uh, is incorrect, and the document's out of, in the, out of background, it should be TNT Civil Contractors. So, just uh, requesting board to close this out.
Chairman, I got one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Are you sure we're ready to close this out, this has been longer than around for years? I make a motion, we approve it.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Uh, we took care of item number eighteen, so that concludes uh, our agenda, um. Is there any, anyone in the audience wishing to speak to any item that's not on the agenda? I think now would be the time to approach the uh, board, uh, Mr. McCoy, if you would, come, come forward, state your name, reason for. Good evening.
I was thinking maybe, I'm just trying to figure, we had the meeting last time, and all we had, we're supposed to have some uh, work done on the place out here on mine, and I, I was thinking, maybe, I think Mr. Peacock may have said something about it, and uh, Mr. Crutchfield said something about it, about us getting some uh, numbers together, and, and all we had before was uh, you'll see what it was gonna cost to, and, and Mr. Daniels, he had a, I think he said something one time about five hundred thousand or something, then they thought, or then he thought, it'd be about three hundred thousand, and then, then we, then y'all decided something, we need to get some number before we know what it comes.
We basically authorized uh, RET to get with Alda Howell Engineering, Eric Wall, uh, to uh, look at the scope of the work, uh, in moving that lift station from where it's currently located to a a location that would be more amenable to you, uh, and find out, do an engineering cost, opinion of probable cost, uh, has, that has not been done yet.
It's been worked on, I talked with Eric uh, today, and he's been communicating with contractor sales folks to get materials and all that sort of stuff, and I don't think he's got anything definitive, but.
You think we'll have that for the first meeting in uh, April?
Oh, yeah, about, yeah, but he's, he's already at four hundred thousand materials.
So Troy, right now, they're, 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 the engineer is doing their due diligence and trying to determine a good uh, uh, hard number. S- and I almost call it a hard number, it's not a contractor price, but it's a, an opinion of probable cost from the engineer, and they'll have that ready for, according to RET, uh, at our meeting, uh, first meeting in April. So, uh, we'll, we'll hear what that number is, and hear an explanation from the engineer, you're certainly welcome to, to come and hear that, that presentation as well.
Okay, and that was, and that was, and I, I believe Mr. Crutchfield brought it up, I think, that everyone, the price is that you already got where it's gonna be down there where it's at, what's the difference it gonna be from not putting it there, to put it up there, straight up and outside the road, instead of going all that cooking mess down there behind it? And then, not, not the price of the whole thing, or it's gonna cost, cost anyhow, to have it uh, put down there.
Right.
Bottle.
Right.
What's the difference in the price gonna be from there to up on the hill, is that what you said in the script?
Yeah, to move it, whatever the price is gonna cost to, to the installation where it's at, what it's gonna cost to do it up there.
Right.
It could be the total cost, and you, you already know what it's gonna cost, do that, so if it's a, basically close to the same, then it makes sense, if it's gonna be way out, you know, a bit, something to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at the difference, the difference in the cost of retrofitting it a- at its current location, and everything that's planned for right now, and what it would cost us to, to put it where you, where you proposed to put it.
Right.
That difference in the cost.
Yes.
That's the number that we're looking for, yes, that's correct, so we should have that at our first meeting in April.
First meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, if you would, state your name for the record, please.
Um, Susan Copelman.
What is it?
Susan Copelman.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I wanted to ask, like, if y'all scheduled a special meeting, I know that there was some Compass Lake people here, I might have missed it, I don't know, the last time y'all had a night meeting, there was talk of doing a meeting like that, have y'all already scheduled it?
That has not been scheduled, to my knowledge, I know that there was a special meet, oh, not special meeting, there was a uh, a meeting that Commissioner Branch and uh, uh, Ms. Daniels attended. Uh, that, the purpose of that meeting was to see if there was uh, uh, could be some type of compromise solution that uh, uh, the two groups should come up with, as I understand, and I'll let uh, Commissioner Branch or Ms. Daniels give a report on that meeting, uh, if, you know, just to kind of summarize.
Yeah, uh, for your benefit and the commissioners, just as a reminder, so we sent out an email, based on the emails that were provided that night, and asked for the first three representatives that responded, whether they were for a change, against a change, or open to a compromise. Um, with the idea that we may host more, but honestly, after that meeting, uh, what we concluded is, there really was no um, proposals for any kind of compromise, it was very much either for leaving the ordinance the same, or uh, or for repealing it pretty much entirely, um, and so since that time, we sent out, um, staff sent out a survey to those same email addresses and asked to share um, with others, this is not any kind of scientific survey, we're not really using it to, other than just to gauge, because there's a lot of everyone feels this way, or everyone feels that way, and so it was more to just get a feel for what the community really is um, saying. Uh, those results I will share with the commissioners, um, I can send it by email, but uh, basically, it was about seventy percent said they wanted it to be left the way it was, and around twenty-five percent said, we'd want it to be changed, um, to, to like completely repealed, and there was very little room for compromise on the survey as well, so.
Yeah, my, my only concern with that is, is this really impacts not just Compass Lake and the Hills, this impacts the entirety of Jackson County.
And I do want to say, the survey just was people that live there or own property, so that's why I say this was not a Jackson County-wide survey.
So, am, am I understanding that it was just for Compass Lake area, is that what you're saying?
That's the only place that the survey went, but uh, again, we're not indicating that the board's going to use that for their decision-making process, it was just for information.
Information alone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The legal submit that information to the Attorney General Office?
I have not yet. That's gonna be my.
I was gonna, that was gonna be my question, I know that was one of the concerns that Commissioner Peacock brought up, is trying to get that information before a decision was made, I don't know whether that's the, the overall consensus of the board, is to wait for that Attorney General, uh, you know, uh, opinion, I guess is what you'd call that, uh, so, and you know, again, I, I know that's your opinion, is to wait on it. Uh, so we'll, we'll wait to see what the Attorney General says before we make any decisions on it, and then go from there. If, if any of the commissioners want to bring that back up earlier, they certainly, we certainly can, but uh, right now, it sounds like the consensus is to wait to, to hear from uh, the Attorney General, and see what they have to say. Okay, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Captain Garcia.
Thank you.
And um, about the survey, I just wanted to point out, the majority of the people that night that you got emails from were the grassroots people. I did everything I could to get that email out to people who are in favor of change, uh, so, and I had asked Willian, you know, I have multiple lots, but I only voted one time, but Facebook chatter, the other group, they were encouraging each other, everybody to vote for every single lot, and husbands and wives voted for lots, so anyways, okay, so, um, I didn't know when the appropriate time to bring this up, and we're not talking about houses. Um, we're talking about section forty-two at the last meeting, and you're making changes, and Division Five, Compass Lake and the Hills is in forty-two. And there are ordinances that prevent people from earning income on their property, um. The most recent one will be if, you know, when the ADU is going to affect, the wording in our ordinance will prevent us from having ADUs, which will allow other Jackson County residents to rent out and, and supplement income, and would also provide affordable housing for, you know, other people looking for something cheaper.
Yeah, I, I think, and again, I'm not speaking for any of the other commissioners, but I think when this issue does come up, after we hear from the Attorney General, uh, is that i- if we repeal the ordinance, it would repeal it in its entirety, and Compass Lake and the Hills would then basically fall under the same provisions as the rest of the county.
Okay, but, so what if?
Is that, is that a fair way of stating that?
Okay, and I understand that, so what if, you know, because we started out, we've been doing this a year and a half, uh, and really just focused on the housing ordinance, so what if, you know, it's agreed not to change, so now you have a section in Jackson County where people are not permitted to earn income on their property, so.
That, that, that will be taken into account by the commissioners in making that decision.
Okay, can I bring to light a couple of ordinances, so you have the potential with the ADU? Okay, can I bring to light a couple of ordinances, so you have the potential with the ADU, but we also have no trade businesses, so for the definition for Compass Lake and the Hills, trade business means any business conducted for profit, but which requires the use of a building or buildings in addition to the dwelling for the conduct of that business, so if I'm a welder and and I had a gentleman down the road from me do some metal work for me, he has a full-time job, he supplements his family's income, he's a welder, it's in his shop on his property, but he is violating the ordinance that says no trade business, no one shall conduct a trade business in the unit. I mean, are we aware of that and Jackson County has a lot of tradespeople and and there are people currently violating that, is this ordinance necessary? And and then the other one is, I can have any animal, I can have a camel, but they say I have chickens and I only need four or five for my husband and myself and for baking, but I have extra, so I could sell the eggs, so they pay for their own feed, now I'm violating an ordinance. And I went to a lady's house down the road, beautiful site built home, fantastic color greens, I got fresh out of her garden, she has goats and chickens and her plan is to get an LLC and become licensed to sell her milk and her eggs, I didn't tell her about this, you know, but so, I mean, there's just, I just feel like we're like the forgotten coast, you know? Tim was saying that the ADUs are going to be in every subdivision, oh, but ours, you know?
So I guess what I'm hearing you say is there's a lot of lot of provisions in the current ordinance that are precluding certain types of activities that are allowed in other parts of the county but are not allowed in Compass Lake.
Right, and and they affect people's income, it affects people's income.
I think that has to be taken into account by each one of the commissioners as we discuss and vote on it whenever it comes up.
I thank you for bringing it up, because I hadn't thought about it.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that being said, I see no one else, Fred, is there anyone online indicating a desire to speak on any issue that was not on the agenda, hopefully not?
As a reminder, anyone wishing to speak may use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine via telephone. I see no hands.
Thank you, Michelle, anything from council?
So I did want to update on the, first, this was on the sales tax issue that I had brought up, I have not gotten my questions answered by the Department of Revenue yet about the overlap of the dates, if we go ahead and repeal that ordinance now, when the new date or effective date should be. I've gotten crooked from that, so the other thing that I needed to bring up is that DOR advised us that in the event that we have to adopt this in the future by referendum, it can only take place in a general election year, which is going to be an even year. So you would, if we don't get this renewed, the next time that you'd be able to implement would be by referendum in twenty twenty-six, so you would lose over a year of of those collections, so it is something that we need to address.
Do we need to address that tonight or?
So I guess the direction I really need from the board, and I apologize, I had hoped to have something kind of put in writing for you all with the information from DOR, but what I had recommended was doing a repeal now and implementing a new tax, but I think DOR may be looking for us to simply repeal portions of the existing ordinance, maybe repeal that sunset provision and re-implement it with the the new provisions to become effective as of the the date following the existing sunset provision.
You're gonna have to put something in writing for us to do that, aren't you?
Yeah, I mean, they want to see a draft ordinance, so that's kind of the direction that I need from you all, I wanted to go ahead.
You need direction to draft that ordinance.
Yeah. I mean, I'm comfortable if DOR blesses our draft and all we do is repeal that sunset provision, even if you don't want to change anything about the limitation on the uses of the funds right now under your ordinance, you're limited to funding your road and bridge department, and that was something that I wanted you all to, you know, give me some feedback on if you want to continue with that limitation, but I just need a little bit more direction.
I think.
I'm not prepared to do anything on it until I see more. I need to see something in writing as to what she's proposing.
Well, I think she needs some direction though, relative to whether we want to change what those funds can be used for.
Yes, it's really only two questions, do you want to repeal it now or do you want to repeal it as of the date that it's going to expire on its own, which is December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five? And then do you want to implement a new tax going forward, January first, twenty twenty-six? But do you want any limitations on that? It's really just two questions, do it now or in twenty twenty-six? Limitation or for any public purpose other than?
Is there any advantage to either way, I mean, does it make?
Uh, so the reason I had wanted to go ahead and repeal it now was to ensure that we didn't have issues with DOR, but they kind of inserted themselves into this by reaching out to us first, so I'm hopeful that we can clear up any issues about the dates, so we don't have to, my only concern is making sure that we have it done correctly with DOR prior to July first.
So you're you're asking us to go ahead and repeal that tonight?
No, I'm just asking you to give me some direction, the draft I have right now calls for a repeal as of the date that you adopted, presumably sometime in May or June, and then implementing a new tax with no limitation on the use of the funds, but that may be not, may not be what you want to do.
That would be up to us to make that determination.
And I can.
Can you get us a draft copy, can you go ahead and get us a draft copy and then we can make that decision at the first April meeting?
Yes.
Okay, is that okay with everybody?
I want to see something in writing.
Yeah.
I can print you the draft I have right now, if you want to see it tonight.
I think we probably want a little time to look over it, but.
Before the next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, do it next meeting.
The second thing is, it did take me a little bit longer to address Commissioner Peacock's questions about vacating the plat and declaring an antiquated plat, I did have to do a little deeper dive into the history of the Compass Lake and Hills plats. But I do have all of that wrapped up and I anticipate getting that out to the Attorney General later this week.
Okay, good, good, yeah. Anything else, that's all two items?
That's it.
Okay. Well, I am.
Okay, just a couple of things, first of all, wanted to thank Sarah because she filled in for Bridget last week by putting the agenda together for you all, which may seem like a small task, but it's not, so thank you, Sarah, for handling that.
Thank you, Sarah.
And then also, I have a, I don't have it printed where y'all can, but it's a real simple agreement with the SBA, they want to set up as soon as we can get this, I think within seventy-two hours of us getting this agreement back to them, they will set up at the Ag Center on Highway ninety, I think this is as a result of the tornadoes and everything, so they'll come into the community and set up where people can come and apply for assistance.
Assist assistance with the damages.
If they need to take out a disaster.
Partial or residential or both?
I believe it's residential, and so if you all will approve this, Michelle's taking a look at it and we'll get this, the chairman to sign.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKenney, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve that, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
And the last thing I I had was we got a text from Kelsey today that we were notified that we have made it into the top eight for the Florida Museum of Museum of Black History, so out of twelve, they now narrowed it down to eight and we were the only rural community on that list, so if that process continues to unfold, we're excited to see where it goes, so just wanted to.
At least we made the next, the first cut anyway.
That's right.
Absolutely, very good.
That's all I have.
Congratulations. Okay, I think we'll start down at this end.
I just need to be Jeffrey, let me see you at the end.
There we go, Mr. Crutchfield? Mr. Branch, Mr. Peacock?
Yes. Jeff Stevens, can you come, Stuart, can you come forward? I got a question. I was approached by a couple of citizens and they were concerned that the Sheriff's Department is going to be charging some of our municipalities to do dispatching and I hadn't heard anything about it and they were complaining, well, we pay taxes, why have we got to pay additional funds? And what's going on?
I honestly don't have anything to do with that, I couldn't speak to it.
Oh, okay, well, Anna, have you been briefed?
Um, I can't speak to that either, Rhett, you may know more about it.
So I know they're rolling out new dispatch protocols and going through training for both fire, EMS, law enforcement and the dispatchers themselves under a new program and I'm sorry, the names left me, but that's the only thing I'm aware of that's been recent.
Probably just that, yeah, there you go.
Maybe maybe we can invite the sheriff to come and give us.
I would like a briefing on what's going on, but I think it starts the first of April, doesn't it?
Don't know timelines, the EMS protocols are already going to put in place, we're working on the law enforcement side to move to the same same programs.
Okay.
So this will impact all of the municipalities or those that have the current current?
They've got Mariana, it's not part of it, I think it's Sneets, Cottondale and Graceville. Is what I I was told and I don't know.
Yes, it's just the way they handle the calls and the protocols help us dispatch to correct resources to calls and and we have people that are more versed on that that can share that with you.
No, not nine one one call.
Yeah.
Yeah, any anything to do with law enforcement.
I'll be happy to connect with the Sheriff's Office.
I think it'd be a good idea to do that and maybe they'll invite him to give us an update on it or a report, you know, as soon as possible.
Yeah, maybe the next meeting, because I, they asked me and I said, I don't know anything about it.
Not heard that either.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all.
Well, I will say that I talked to Rhett today about the the Hydrilla and the Mill Pond and Rhett reported to me that they did a new treatment via airboats, spray application with a new chemical, Priscilla, Priscillacor, am I saying that right? And based on their first assessment, Rhett, it looks like it's having some immediate impact and they'll continue to monitor the situation.
That's right.
Sounds like there might be good news relative to the Hydrilla treatment.
We hope so.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Without anything else, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting with Jackson County County Commissioner.